Here we go.
I'll go ahead and call us to order. Today, of course, is Thursday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is the Maggie Walker Governor's School Regional School Board Meeting. Mrs. Marshall, would you call the role for us?
Yes, and I'm gonna call in order of locality. So Mr. Royce Page of Charles City, not in attendance. Dr. Joppy, Charles City, not in attendance. Ms. Bailey, Chesterfield.
Here.
Dr. Doherty, Chesterfield, not in attendance. Mr. Wright, Goochland.
I am here.
Dr. Rayly, Goochland.
Here.
Mr. Axel, Hanover.
Present.
Dr. Gil, Hanover.
Present.
Ms. Ogburn, Henrico.
I'm here, thank you.
Dr. Cashwell, Henrico.
I'm here.
Ms. Heislop.
I'm here, but my picture's not showing. My camera's not working.
Oh, no. Thank you.
I'm seeing everybody else.
Dr. Hackney, Hopwell. Ms. Hall, King and Queen. She said she would be here, so maybe I'll check later on her. Dr. Carter, I know is not here today. Ms. Barber, New Kent.
I'm here.
Mr. Nichols, New Kent. Mr. Pritchett, Petersburg.
I'm here.
Dr. Petrie Martin, Petersburg. Not here. Ms. Ayers, Powhatan. Is your microphone muted, Ms. Ayers? I saw your face.
Yeah.
I didn't know you called my name. I'm here.
Sorry. Dr. Jones, Powhatan.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews, Prince George, not here. Dr. Penny cuff, Prince George.
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, Richmond.
Present.
Thank you. And Ms. Plavich, Richmond.
Present, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall, Dr. Joppy came on right after you called her name.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. I appreciate that. Let's see. Board members, is there any need to add anything or amend the agenda that was presented through link by Mrs. Marshall? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second, Mrs. Ayers.
Okay, great, thank you. Board members, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Great, thank you. And next up, we've got the approval of our minutes. These have been posted for some time, so I'm hoping that everybody's had an opportunity to review them. Happy to entertain a motion or host a discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett.
Oh, Mr. Mr. Wright, John Axel, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Axel. So we've got a motion in a second to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition? Great, thank you. Dr. Lowry, looks like you're all teed up and ready to go.
We are good to go. I'd also point out Ms. Hall signed on momentarily, so or a minute ago, so she is also with us.
Thank you.
Yep. Our first item is a recognition that I would like to share with the board, and I am pulling up the screen right now for it. And this was a junior receiving a gold medal, an American Visions Medal at the National Scholastic Art Awards. And I do see that Coach Hall is on the call, so I would like to defer over to him, and perhaps he could talk a little bit about this.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Dr. Lowry. Let me introduce myself. My name is Jeff Hall. I have the honor of being the Fine Arts Department Chair here at Maggie Walker Governor's School. Despite all of the challenges that we have faced this year, our fine arts students have continued to create some really remarkable work. This year, in the regional Scholastic Art Awards, we had fifty total awards for our school. Seven Gold Key, fourteen Silver Key with one portfolio silver, twenty-five honorable mention and three honorable mention portfolios. Those seven Gold Key awards were all sent to, virtually, sent to New York for adjudication at the national level. And we had some really great news come back, that Devon Powers, whose homeschool district is is Goochland. She received a both a gold medal award for her wonderful piece titled Blue Face. It is a crocheted sculpture, rather large scale. And so she received both a gold gold medal for that, as well as a natural American Visions Medal. So normally, pre-COVID, she would have this work both exhibited up in New York, and she would be recognized at Carnegie Hall. Unfortunately, they're not doing the exhibition or the or the the piece. So I want to take a moment and introduce Devon, who I hope is on the call. She was planning on being here. Devon, are you here?
Yes.
So please join me in giving her a big round of applause.
Thank you very much. There's a. All right. The next item that we have to share with the the board in terms of a congratulations is, and I'm going to share this real quick. Oh, for crying out loud. There we go. Two Maggie Walker juniors won scholarships to a four-week immersion program. And I think I can share that screen. And I did see that two of our world language teachers, Ms. Wells and Ms. Lemko, are on the call. So maybe while I'm pulling this up, if you could start and explain what a tremendous honor this is.
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Stephanie Wells, and I'm the co-chair, along with Ms. Lemko, for the International Languages Department. I'm also the sponsor for the National Honor Society for Spanish. And it is my pleasure to introduce Matthew Klaus Klausner and Puja Mithraj as the winners this year. One for the Spanish Honor Society Four-Week Immersion Program and Matthew for the National Spanish Exam Four-Week Immersion Program. It is unique this year in that, as as Mr. Hall alluded to, the challenges with COVID. In the past, we have had student trips abroad. And this year, this is domestic, but there's a fantastic program, Concordia Language Villages. And it is unique because only two students were awarded this nationally. So to have, well, two for National Spanish Exam and two for Honor Society. So to have two out of four possible national scholarships to come from Maggie Walker, we are absolutely thrilled. And I'm going to actually turn this over to Ms. Lemko, because I have not had the privilege of teaching these two students. I get them next year, and I'm super excited. So I will let Ms. Lemko address their abilities and what they've achieved.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Amanda Lemko. And as Stephanie mentioned, it is a great gift to teach these two students, and she's going to love them next year. Because you just rarely encounter, not only their talent, but their passion. And they have really gone outside the classroom to pursue learning in many different ways. They enjoy the culture, the language, and have both said how they plan to use it in the future. So we're just extremely grateful for them and proud of them and see them as obvious deserving candidates of this opportunity. And we hope it'll be fantastic for them.
I see that we have the two students on the call. Do either of you wish to just share a few thoughts about this?
I'm.
Say thank you.
Yeah. Thank you to everyone. This is such a big honor, and I'm really happy, and I'm sure Matthew is as well, to represent Maggie Walker nationally, especially in this opportunity and like showcase what great language programs we have here and how they've really helped us grow as individuals and as Spanish speakers.
We should have had you say that in Spanish, Puja. No.
Matthew, I think I saw you on the call.
Um, hi, I just wanted to basically say the same thing. I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I'm really excited to use it to represent Maggie Walker and also to like advance in the Spanish community and just connect with other people and use it in the future.
And in closing, I'll just say that I have no doubt that both of these students will use their skills to connect and make a difference in our communities moving forward. They already are, and they will continue to do so from this experience.
Really fantastic, thank you.
Job.
Yeah, seriously. Great recognitions this month, Dr. Lowry, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me switch ourselves out now. Our next item, I believe, is public comment.
Board members, I know that Mrs. Marshall circulated the public comment to everyone yesterday. I hope you've had an opportunity to read that. It was from an alumni, I believe from two thousand and six, and was appreciative of the fact that we had let let all of the candidates this past year go through the admissions process without the high-stakes test and advocating that that be part of our approach as we move forward and consider this issue. So also had some praise for Dr. Lowry and his comments in regards to our admissions process. So anyway, I guess that's going to take us now on to the director's reports. Dr. Lowry?
Yes, it is. And I've got a few things to go over, and I also have a very special treat for us as well at the end of my director's report. Just a few things here, and you can see them on the screen. The We the People team is competing in the national finals next weekend. This will be our twenty-third appearance in the Nationals, and we usually do fairly well. So we certainly want to wish all of our participants good luck in that. It's virtual this year, as you can imagine, but that hasn't seemed to stop them from getting to that point. Few things that we have going on the next few days that are pretty important. We are giving the PSAT test tomorrow to our tenth graders, and we have set up a way for them to be able to take the test here on campus from about nine till one o'clock or so. Normally, this is something that we would give them back in October, but we just did not have the logistics in place to be able to do that at that time. But we're in a little better spot right now. So the tenth graders will have an opportunity to take the PSAT. Our new students, the incoming ninth graders, are having a virtual registration night next Tuesday. Last year, you know, we got caught kind of at the wrong time and didn't do much at all for them besides send them links and tell them how to register. But this time, we have the ability to talk about our classes, do a little bit of recruiting for our electives, a much better experience. Very similar to the virtual Future Dragon Day that we did a few weeks ago. That was very well received. So looking forward to Tuesday night, being able to start to lay some eyes on on our new dragons. AP testing is coming up, and students have the opportunity to either take it here on campus or at at home. And so Dr. Rachel Loving in school counseling is facilitating that. But we did have a record number of kids sign up to take the APs. That doesn't necessarily mean that we'll have a record number taking them, but we'll we'll see soon enough. But we are ready to roll forward with AP testing, and that begins May third. That's right around the corner. And then a couple of things that are sort of positive things that I really want to share. One is the National Honor Society, and our Operation Smile Club did a lot of charitable work during the pandemic and raised, and I think it's pretty astounding, one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight toothbrushes to donate to children in Guatemala. Operation Smile is an international organization that they're bread and butters performing cleft lip surgery on children in impoverished areas that would not have access to that medical procedure. In some cultures, a cleft lip is seen as a very negative thing. So helping these children, you know, be able to move past that is a really, really noble effort. It's very close to my heart. My son was born with a cleft lip, and my daughter is a senior executive with Operation Smile now, based out of Virginia Beach. He's responsible for the education for North America, which is pretty cool. So this was done completely independent of that fact, but when I saw this come across my desk, I I just thought it was wonderful, having lived on both sides of that issue of having a child with a birth defect, as well as having a daughter that's now, you know, trying to eradicate that for others. It's pretty cool. So kind of a nice, nice one for me. The Night of the Dragon is coming up again. It is going to be virtual. It's going to be next weekend. Ginger, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you're on the call. Do you want to say just a couple of words about that real quick before I move on to the next items?
Um, sure, just a couple of things. I encourage everyone to register. Bob's got the crazy URL there, but you can just go to www.nighthofthedragon.org, which is much easier to remember, and you can register. If you do, please don't use the social registry registration options like they they offer Facebook and Google. We're having glitches with those. So if you just type your stuff in, it's free to register. We have a ton of great silent auction and live auction items. We'll be doing the live on Saturday night. The silent will open this weekend, so I encourage you to check it out. Check out the thing on Saturday. We'll have some great info about Maggie Walker. But more importantly, you might get some really cool stuff at a good price and support the school. So www.nighthofthedragon.org.
Thank you very much. And then the the last two items are dealing with some work that's being done by our school librarian, Wendy Degro. And Wendy, throughout this entire pandemic, has has really led the school in helping support the sort of the intangible needs of our kids, the social, emotional needs of our kids who, at first, you know, were in complete isolation and now semi-isolation, and now some come to school and some stay at home. But she has really dedicated her resources, her time, and certainly her talent to finding ways to engage kids and to make them feel comfortable when they come back to school and also make them feel comfortable if they're not able to come back to school. And one of her efforts was the the words of welcome on the chalkboard. And basically, she solicited from parents of kids, you know, what would you want to say to students who came back to school? What are some encouraging words? Because, to be honest with you, the first couple of days back, and for those of you that have either had kids come back or have are working on that hybrid model, the first few days back are are really pretty stressful for everybody. We hadn't seen each other in a long time. There was certainly this this sort of standoffish attitude, and it was it was really kind of quiet the first day or two. You know, but it got it. It now looks a lot more like a regular school, and we've had many more come back. Just, I guess, as an aside, right now, we're probably sitting at about forty-two percent of our students that have come back to school for in-person learning. And it started off at about thirty-four, so they're starting to come back. And we've been very thankful that transportation has been able to be provided for them. So we're we're getting there. But at any rate, Wendy came up with this board as a way of being able to communicate with our kids that were back here, some words from folks at home to make them feel more comfortable, a little bit more welcomed, and and maybe gain a little bit of confidence with being back, because they haven't been around school for over a year, just a little bit over a year. And then the second item that I want to offer for you today is, along with Wendy's talents as a librarian and a resource accumulator or resourceress, as she refers to herself, and and we sometimes do too, she's also a poet, and she is very gifted at being able to pick up on a mood or or an image and put it into some really fantastic words that you can kind of carry around with you. And she wrote a poem when the kids come came back to school. And I'm going to, if you'll indulge me, turn it over to Wendy for a couple of moments, and I'm going to stop sharing the screen so that perhaps we can see her. And she's going to share that poem with you before we roll on to our next business item on the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Lowry. Yeah, those first day back back in particular were really different. And this particular poem, I'm still tweaking it a little bit, but it is called On the Second Day. So it's I started writing it on the second day back, which for us was March sixteenth. On the second day, on the second day, even the air feels different. As if yesterday's percussion of lockers and laughter disrupted molecules huddled in these hallways for months. Air revived by molecules we carried inside two hundred pairs of lungs. Already, we've begun to calibrate half faces with the rest of us. Jeans baggy or snug, high tops or crocs, rainbow socks, swagger or sway in the way we walk or roll. So many students taller than before. Though at times we crouch or lean closer to hear, our names find us more often today, catapulting from throat to ear across classrooms and cafeteria without microphones or Zoom. That first day back, we stumbled on routes made strange by arrows on the floor, eyes darting, bodies held tight. The act of moving together unsteady, like that first time riding a bicycle. Yet already, this pedaling comes easier. Sneakers squeaking as friends skip, hair bouncing down the hall, commons pulsing with lathering and overlapping voices. Such mundane magic. Some of us stop, lean against a wall, and listen. There are moments, too, we forget the pandemic and rush toward each other, then skid to a halt as near hugs morph to elbow bumps or high fives freeze inches apart. Grins rising above our masks at this intoxicating proximity. On the second day, even the air feels different. Thank you.
Although they're muted, Wendy, they are clapping furiously for you. Thank you so much. Wendy shared with us, shared that with us a while ago, and it just, to me, it's just amazing, because it's every every line I can I can put that image in my head. I'm like, yep, that's that's what it was like. That's what it was like. Yep, I remember that. And it was it was kind of a a unique thing for all of us. So thank you so much for sharing that with us. In terms of coming events, I've already hit on the highlights there, so I don't think there's anything other than that that really needs to be brought to the board's attention. Although you can certainly click on the link and take a look. We do have a couple other folks that are with us today, one of which is our robotics team for outreach, and they're going to do a short little presentation for us. Folks, are you on the call? I've got you shrunken down right now, so I can't see you.
Yep.
All right, you have you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Amanda Perez, and I'm the Chief Community Operations Officer of the Robotics Team. So basically, I'm in charge of everything that doesn't involve the robot.
Hi, I'm Lexi Pasternak. I'm the Director of Fundraising and Marketing, and that's basically what it sounds like.
My name is Nikki Kumar, and I'm the Director of Events for our team. So basically, I'm in charge of planning and coordinating all the events undertaken by our robotics team.
Yeah, so just to give you the broad organization that we're under is called the For the Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, or usually abbreviated as FIRST. And we're one of the biggest STEM clubs in the school, and we've actually had a lot of meetings during the pandemic to still teach people different scales as well as build the robot. So we've had small meetings to build the robot in person with a lot of COVID protocols. But we've also had a lot of online meetings for computer aided design, which is how we design a robot online, as well as programming and outreach is what you're a part of, which is a lot of community outreach and promoting STEM to the community.
So what happens during our season is that members learn to build a robot from the ground up in an intense and rewarding build season to then go on and compete at competitions. And this year, that looks a little bit different. There are new at-home challenges to give teams the same technical experience and challenges, but in a sort of more safer environment. And as Amanda mentioned, members get extensive training and experience along the way, not only with technical software and equipment that we use in the build room and on our computers, but also in valuable soft skills like presentation and team communication through things like our corporate leadership training.
Community impact is a big part of our team, and we've been still trying to make an impact in our community with the pandemic. This school year, we've had three food drives to collect canned food and other non-perishable goods for Feedmore to help those affected by the pandemic. And we've collected over three carloads full of goods from Maggie Walker students. Additionally, this year, we held a free virtual STEM event for middle school students. We decided to conduct it virtually, which ultimately gave the opportunity for more students to attend. Our event had over two hundred signups, which can be compared to the eighty signups we had last year at the same in-person event. And the kids had so much fun learning about STEM. In addition, we invited various presenters to come and talk about their careers in STEM, including an MIT graduate aeronautical engineer, the Central Waste Management of Virginia, and many Maggie Walker clubs and organizations, such as the Muoffe Theta Math Honor Society, TSA, and of course, our very own robotics team. We created little kits for the students to come pick up at Maggie Walker so that they could do activities with the presenters and follow along virtually, kind of like a hybrid event. These kits included seeds, planters, merch, and solar-powered car kits, which was one of the activities that our robotics team led for the students.
Yeah, so another important outreach event is our annual First Lego League Tournament, which is a competition for elementary and middle school robotics teams. You might have heard of that sort of branch of our organization before. But this year, our tournament was virtual, of course, but no less exciting. We had many four-two-two team members and alumni who volunteered as judges, greeters, referees, and more, not only for our Maggie Walker tournament, but also for other regional tournaments, including the state championship. In addition, our team ran FLL Fun Rooms statewide to help engage kids with engineering and team-building activities in between their competition slots, which was really exciting and a lot of fun. And we were actually awarded the Katie Smith Volunteer Award by the Virginia DC FLL in recognition for our work. For example, I remember that they told us that because of the virtual format, there were a lot of teams that really weren't sure what to expect and were kind of nervous. But our greeters that sort of met them right at the the first Zoom room they entered were able to help get them comfortable and ready and excited. And so besides our work at the competitions, we also help mentor individual teams, two of which this year actually went to win awards at states, which we're super excited about. And we have plans for next year to start and fully fund ten new Richmond Public School First Lego League teams. So super exciting.
Yeah, and looking to the futures to wrap up our season, this Sunday, we actually are having a Virginia advocacy conference for other FIRST teams across the state. So we're going to teach about lobbying for STEM education and funding, as I'll sort of mention our previous efforts and collaborate with other teams that we know in our region that have done similar efforts. So really excited. It's the first iteration of this event, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any board members that have a question for any of our robotics students?
Quick comment, if I could. First off, amazing presentation just to us. So I can only imagine all the work and and everything that you've done turning out in these events even better. So thank you very much for that. Very impressive, and I love the level of engagement you were able to get through this really sort of challenging year.
That has been, I think, a recurring theme throughout a lot of our our programs, is it's amazing to me how adaptable and resilient the students have been at being able to find ways to do things in the virtual environment. You know, if you think back to about a year ago, we were all kind of in shock and and didn't really know how to do anything. And now it's like second nature. They can figure out how to put on conferences online. They're they're amazing and just truly, truly wonderful to have them as part of our learning community. The next and last agenda item that I have for my report, and Ms. Shepherd, I have made you co-host, so you can share your screen. We do have a graduation announcement that we would like to make, and we are extraordinarily excited to be able to make it, given the circumstances and the time that we're in right now. So I'm not going to steal Ms. Shepherd's thunder. Carrie, you are you're on.
All right, well, welcome, everyone. Yes, exactly, as Dr. Lowry said, we're very excited to be able to offer an in-person graduation experience this year. And the credit really goes to Dr. Lowry and Coach Hawkins for finding a location that's going to be, I think, really, really exciting for our students, because they'll be able to celebrate this this, you know, amazing accomplishment along with their families in a safe way, and it's right down the street. So I'm going to just share my screen. I sent everyone a an invitation. So if you see it, it comes from me. It it will look, it'll be from green envelope if it doesn't, but it just opens up, and it's just a little digital invitation so that you have all the information. And then you'll notice at the bottom of it, it lets you know that it is Friday, June eighteenth. It's at five PM. So those of you who have joined us in the past, we we decided to kind of push the time back a little bit just to hopefully maybe make the evening weather in June a little bit more. just to hopefully maybe make the evening weather in June a little bit more comfortable if we could. And encourage more people to join us, but it is at Hovey Field, which is right off of Lombardi at Virginia Union. It's, it's designed for this kind of thing in terms of having a number of people present. But if you've ever seen the field and a lot of our students know it from where they've done practices there and the like. But there are large stands available. There's parking on both sides of the field. And of course there's the option to walk from our own parking lot. So there is a place for you to RSVP. I'm not asking for you to commit today, of course. But if you could let me know by the 28th of May, that way I can send you further details and reach out and let you kind of know what the plan will be. But other than that, we just hope you'll join us and celebrate our wonderful students. And even though it's been a weird year, it's definitely worth applauding how they've managed to get through it with a lot of, a lot of just sheer willpower and, and in my opinion enthusiasm surprisingly. So thanks. Go ahead and give it back to you, Dr. Lowry.
Thank you so much. Hovey Field is, they just put in a new turf field last summer. And because of COVID, it's never been played on by a football team. So it is still just pristine. So we're excited. We have a wonderful partnership with Virginia Union as well. We let them use our facilities, our track all the time. And we're able to use their softball fields and now we're able to use their football field for graduation. So I would imagine that the majority of us on this phone call probably graduated on a football field. So we are taking it old school. We're going to hope for the best in terms of the weather and we've got a rain date on Sunday if the Friday night doesn't work out. But it is, it is going to be great. It is going to be great. And just being able to cap it off with, cap off the year with an in-person live graduation. All the kids together socially distanced, plenty of room for parents. It's, it's just going to be a great experience. So we are really, really excited about, about being able to go over to Hovey. So that is the extent of the director's report. Are there any questions on any of the items that were brought before we move to the consent items?
No, I think actually, Dr. Lowry, we need to go to the strategic plan.
Oh, goodness gracious. I apologize. We sure do. And that sir is why you are the chair and I am not. I even have it all queued up here. I just, I don't know why I didn't hop to it, but give me a second and I'm going to get right back over there. So yeah, I do want to give an update on the strategic plan. We have made a little bit of progress over the past. Slide these out. There we go. We did make a little bit of progress since the last time that we met on the plan. In particular, our school advisory committee, which is made up of parents, teachers and students, completed a survey of our current students, sort of a racial climate survey. And they have put that into a very raw form. They're going to polish it up for me. And then I'm certainly going to be able to share it with you as well. And that kind of falls under engaging students. I'm trying to find the goal right here. There we go. Facilitating student input and feedback. That was a big ship for us to be able to get that accomplished. And I've taken a look at the very raw thing and it, the, the best part of the report is the students offer up some really operational suggestions of how we can make our learning community more inclusive and more welcoming to all of our students, particularly our students of color and our LVGTQ students and their suggestions that they offered in rough form. And there's a couple of things that need to be tweaked out, but they're, they're doable. They're financially doable. They're not particularly difficult in terms of the operational side of it. And they're going to, I think if we do it right, it's, it's going to be an extremely positive thing. And that's in line with our strategic plan as well. So hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have that in an executive form that I can present. I literally got it yesterday afternoon. And read through it last night and they still had all the markups in the columns as well. So still working on that, but it was good data. It shows that, you know, there, there are things that we do very well here and there are things that we need to work on. And that's not a surprise to anybody. We were well aware of that situation. But having some data to support that is, is really good. And being able to partner with the school advisory committee to get them involved in the life of the school, I think is a very positive thing as well. So that's the fundamental main change on there. Everything else are just works in progress or red that we're starting to get, be able to get back to engaging in some of these, these processes and goals and objectives. Again, it's, it's becoming much easier to do so with having students and faculty on campus. So some of these ones that were very difficult for us to do over the, the Zoom are now starting to be able to move a little bit better. So I think that we are operationalizing is considering that we've had the plan now for one year. I think we're making a good start. There's certainly a lot more work that needs to be done. And you can certainly click on it and go through each of them at your own convenience. But we are definitely making progress, I think is the best way of putting it. And I'm very optimistic that we'll continue to make progress on our strategic plan.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Lowry. So I guess that brings us to our consent agenda.
It does. The consent agenda is relatively simple this month. I'm going to share back to the main screen. And there are personnel items that you can click on to see the actual names. But we have two coaching hires that we're making. We have one resignation of a teacher that is moving. And we also have one new hire of a chemistry teacher that we have used to fill a vacancy that we'll have for this fall as one of our chemistry teachers is going back to the University of Virginia to get her PhD. So those are the personnel items and they can be viewed in the folder that the board has access to. The next two items, next three items are all financial, our revenue balance sheets, budget versus obligation, the transaction register, as well as our spending down of our cares account transactions. We're doing fine there. We will not leave any money on the table with cares and then donation report as well. All of that is accessible by the board. And these items can all be taken as a block. And just as an FYI, the finance committee did review all of the financial items in their meeting last week. And those minutes are included at the bottom of the agenda.
Slow on the mute button. Sorry. So board members, let's take this as a slate. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
This is Sarah Barber. I move we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second, Mickey Akberg.
So board members, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any in opposition? Great. Thank you so very much. Dr. Lowry, I think that brings us to our action items.
Yes, sir.
We've got a few.
We do have a few and I'm going to pull them up and they do need to be voted on individually. The first item is the approval of the fiscal year 22 budget. The budget has been, was presented last month. It was open for public comment. We've reviewed all of that and the budget from last month that we presented is the budget that we are going forward. There are no amendments or changes that, that needed to take place within the past, the past month. So that budget is the budget that we are offering up for approval. And I'm going to pull it up here in just a moment.
Dr. Lowry, if you scroll down on that agenda item, you'll get the link to the budget.
Okay. I'm working on it.
Go back to 12A. Scroll down. There you go.
There we go. All right. Are we able to see that?
Yes, sir.
All right. And again, the, the long and the short of it is we anticipate $9,263,350. And that is our, also our expenditure number. It matches up with a zero balance. And that will include a 5% compensation increase for all faculty and staff on the campus in line with the governor's recommendations and the governor's state money that they are giving for that. So we are able to balance a budget, accomplish our needs, take care of the physical structure of the building as well as the human structure in the building, I think in a very positive way. And I absolutely want to commend your finance officers for helping us with this. They are invaluable. That is one meeting every month that I really, really look forward to because I am becoming a better financial person, but I don't have the wisdom that they do and the experience. And they help us build this budget to where it works. I also certainly want to commend my staff. Dr. Ellis, Mr. Smith, Mr. Bortz, Ms. Hawkins, everybody that contributes and, and puts forward their cost centers with an understanding of how we make it all work. And we go from the wish list to the, we really need to have this list. And this year that jump wasn't too far. You know, one of the, one of the side effects of COVID is we spent less money on certain things and that allowed us to be able to be able to move forward on some items. So this is the budget that we would like to present and ask for the school board's approval.
Well, thank you, Dr. Lowry. I know a lot of time and effort went into this and I'm excited that we'll be able to provide our staff with an increase and, and hopefully they know that we want to give them so much more. But they certainly deserve it. But board members, are there any questions or comments in regards to the budget proposal? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget. Lowry airs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Pritchett.
Thank you. So board members, not hearing any questions or comments, and we've got a motion in a second. All in favor of approving the fiscal year 2022 operating budget proposal as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Any in opposition? Congratulations, Dr. Lowry. I know a lot of work went into that. It almost seems anticlimactic. Well, it goes so quick.
The, the real drama is in the process, not so much the outcome. I think by the time we, by the time we're able to offer it up, it's, it's, it's been, all of the controversial bugs have been ironed out of it. So we certainly appreciate everybody's help on that. The next item, action item for a vote is the school calendar for fiscal year 22, 2122. And again, it's matching up pretty well with most of the district calendars. I will say, and this is not an item for vote today, but starting with fiscal year 23, we are going to most likely, I think we would like to ask your approval, not today, but to go to a pre-Labor Day start as by this year, the majority of our participating districts are now starting before Labor Day. And I think there's a couple more that might join that next year. So for this year, it is a post-Labor Day start. And the, the calendar again, looks pretty similar to everybody else's calendars, I think, that are on the post-Labor Day start.
Okay, board members, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the calendar. Lowry airs.
Thank you.
This is Sarah Barber. I second that.
Thank you both. Okay, board members, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. Onward and upward.
Onward and upward. The next item is a, just a technical item and it's an annual authorization for me to be able to issue teaching contracts and contracts to the staff for the next school year. We usually do that in mid-May, mid-May to late May. So, and again, it's also, those contracts are based upon all of the items that are in the existing budget. So it's just a matter of being able to issue contracts.
Okay. Board members, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, John Axel, I move that we adopt the personnel, I mean, excuse me. Allow Dr. Lowry to do this. I don't know what I'm motioning.
About authorization for, for the director to.
Hey, that sounds good.
Do we have a second to that somewhat unusual motion? Thank you, Miss Bailey. I appreciate the second. All right. So we've got a motion in a second to authorize the director to issue personnel contracts. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Great. Any in opposition? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair. The next item is the approval of the fiscal year 22 fee sheet. And there's kind of a complicated document that I'm putting up here, but it just kind of shows you what we're looking at. If you see red, those are fees that we are removing from the fee sheet because we either don't offer the course anymore. Well, that's really the main reason. And we're trying to clean up our paperwork a little bit. So they need to be removed from the fee sheet. And any item that you see that's in sort of that pinkish, that is either a new charge or an increase in a charge. And again, most of these are pass-throughs and we're not making any funds off of this. It's an issue of the, the resources become more expensive. So we need to be able to charge a little bit more. And then the yellow, sort of the golden color are decreases where for whatever reason, we're able to bring that cost down a little bit. But again, nothing, nothing remarkable here. There are no changes that are radical. They're simply adjustments based on the cost of materials. The vast majority of meal C are workbooks that are being issued to the students that they get to keep. They're oftentimes go along with our world language classes.
Well, thank you, Dr. Lowry. So board members, are there any questions on the student fees for the fiscal year 2022? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Wright, I move that we approve the student fees as then Mickey Akberg.
Thank you.
I second. It's all.
Thank you very much. All right. So board members, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor of approving the fiscal year 2022 student fees, please indicate by saying aye. Any in opposition? Great. Thank you, Dr. Lowry.
All right. And the last item that requires a board a vote are policy, new policies that came out of the policy committee. And Ms. Marshall has done a wonderful job here of putting together what I refer to as the cheat sheet. So you can see what the policy is and what the action on it was. Again, this was presented as a first read last month. I believe you've had time to take a look at it. The vast majority of these policies are either simply minor edits to grammar or cross-reference updates based on the Virginia code. I don't believe there was anything in here this time around that was particularly challenging or difficult. We decided to sort of kick the can down the road to the summer meetings when we can get into the more heavy lifting thing. So this is all what we sort of referred to as low hanging fruit to be able to get caught up with the SBA recommendations.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, since Ms. Az is our policy guru, could she give us a detailed explanation of each of these? So I would feel more comfortable in voting.
Might be no. And Mr. Wright is also on that committee. So.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll go back in my little hole now.
Fine. We can arrange to have you muted.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with that.
Well, I do want to recognize the work of the policy committee. Does take a lot of time and I know that Mrs. Marshall spends a fair amount of time, if nothing else, just coming up with this cheat sheet. But she, she really does spend an awful lot of time going through reading and, and summarizing what it is that we have to address with each of these changes. And as you're all aware from your own divisions, there are quite a few of them that come each year. So this is a second reading. I don't believe that there were any alterations to any policies here since the first reading. And so I'll entertain a motion if we could to take these as a slate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
John Axel, make a motion. We take these as a slate and also make a motion that we approve.
Thank you. So glad we didn't mute you.
Ken Pritchett, I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pritchett. So board members, we have a motion in a second to approve as a slate the policy and procedure proposals that were presented on second reading today. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any in opposition? Great. Thank you. Once again, lots of work into all of these action items. And so I really do appreciate. Great. Thank you. Once again, lots of work into all of these action items. And so I really do appreciate the time of the administration and staff that was put into all of these things. So next that brings us up items for board review and discussion, which I believe has to do with our foundation.
It does. And I would ask Ms. O'Neil to go ahead and.
We're excited. We have four great candidates for our board for next year. I know you have the bios attached. Two are our alumni, one from the class of 2010 and one from the class of 1996. Two are current parents. One of the things I find most exciting is it'll be the first time that we have an alumna, an alum from, who does not live in the area serving with us. Tyler Gibson now lives in New York City, but one of the great things about one of the silver linings of COVID is that we've, of course, all learned how to reach out and work virtually. At the foundation, for as long as I've been involved with it as a volunteer, we've talked about wanting to find ways to encourage people outside the city and especially folks from our smaller districts to be able to get involved. But transportation, of course, you know, the distance is an issue. So this is sort of our first foray into putting some, some action behind that. And we're going to figure out how to, I feel like if we can, if we can mute, work with someone from New York City, we can work with someone from King and Queen and Powtan and Goochland and all those other places. So anyway, they're great candidates. I think they're going to really add value to our board for sure.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for bringing them forward and for the diligence in assembling the list. So board members, are there any questions for Ms. O'Neil or about any of the candidates? Well, that was not a very robust discussion, but we do appreciate nonetheless. All of the efforts and the idea behind really reaching out beyond our borders and being able to include a virtual option for meetings. I do hope that that proves to, to bring some better participation from our outlying counties.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's a great idea. So then Dr. Lowery, I think that brings us to our information.
It does. And I'm going to just roll through it rather quickly here. I'm not going to get too deep into each item. You can certainly check them out. The finance committee minutes are included there for your review. We did have a junior earned first violin selection for all of Virginia. Debate and forensics team won the state championships. Our quiz bowl team also won the 3A state championship. Virginia history day team is advancing to the state contest. And it also included an article, a link to an article there in the Richmond Times Dispatch that talked about our increased diversity in our inbound freshman class. And it was a, a nice article. One of the agreements that I had made with the Richmond Times Dispatch a year ago is that I would always speak to them and I would always give them the absolute truth. The only thing I asked from them is that they be fair and that as we made progress on some of our challenges, that they would report that as well. And they are living up to their end of the bargain with us. So you know, we're going to continue to work on that. And then the next item on there is the superintendent steering committee report and I will defer to Dr. Riley, who was with us this morning when we had our meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Riley, Dr. Lowery. So board members, we had seven school divisions in attendance for our meeting this morning at 8:30. Several topics on the agenda, but I'll highlight three of them. One is the assistant director interviews that will take place Wednesday, April 21st. Dr. Lowery has created a stakeholder group of individuals to be a part of that committee. I will be serving as the superintendent's representative on that committee. We had eight applicants and all highly qualified applicants. Those applications have been narrowed down to four individuals who will be interviewed next week. We'll certainly keep the board informed as we go through the process. Next, we had a real, pretty heavy discussion about extracurricular activities. And some of the questions that we're now getting from some families regarding participation in events that Maggie Walker does not have, for example, band. And what is our approach to allowing students to attend Maggie Walker, but maybe want to participate in an activity that does not, is not offered in that space. And so that we had a really good discussion about that. Certainly, as you can imagine, that's quite complicated because if you allow participation in this, do you allow participation in that? What are the implications for the Virginia High School League? So I expect that superintendents will follow up with a conversation with Dr. Lowery on that. And then most likely provide a recommendation to the policy committee for consideration, but a lot of work to do on that. But that's, that's an important topic that certainly impacts our students. And then finally, we closed with plans for the fall of the year. And with a desire to have more and more students come back to school in person, Maggie Walker is challenged some ways with offering curriculum to students in a distance learning environment if we do not offer instruction in the concurrent setting like we do currently. And so we talked about some of the challenges associated with that with being one high school and some of the curricular needs that students have, some of the staffing that would need to happen in order to accommodate some, some challenges that, that are be, going to be experienced there. So superintendent has provided some recommendations, some things for Dr. Lowery to consider. But certainly that is on all of our minds as we look forward to August and as we want more students back to school in the fall of the year.
That's great. Thank you so much, Dr. Riley. I appreciate your input. Sounds like it was a great meeting for you guys.
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Dr. Lowery, I don't believe we have a need for a closed meeting.
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, great. So are there any other announcements that you haven't already covered?
I do not have any announcements that have not already been covered.
Fantastic. Well, then that brings me to my very favorite agenda item. If we have a motion for adjournment, I would be happy to entertain.
Who could that be?
My old buddy.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for adjournment. I think I got that motion right.
Certain you did. Thank you. Is there a second out there? Great. Thank you, Ms. Bailey, Mr. Barber. Thank you. So we've got a motion in a second. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye. I know there is no opposition. Thank you, one and all. I hope you have a wonderful month. We'll see you, actually, as a full board, we will not see you again until August, but some of you will see again at the executive board meeting next month. I wish you all well and have a great day.